Lou, ready to go?
Here, Ellen. She's here.
Ellen, you ready on there?
There he is. Yes.
Outstanding. The meeting will come to order. Council agenda: Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of August 22nd, 2017.
Posting of notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at municipal building on December 21st, 2016 where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the daily record on December 27th, 2016, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 27th, 2016, and was forwarded by fax out of the local newspapers and local radio stations on December 21st, 2016. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Can everyone rise for the flag salute? Mr. Peluso?
I'd like to lead it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Khalid, roll call.
Mr. Carriffi?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Ms. Grignardi?
Present.
Mr. Peluso?
Present.
Mr. Valori?
Present.
Also in attendance are Township Attorney John Niglesino, the Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Ellen Sandman, CFO Ann Cucci, and the Township Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Our upcoming meetings: September 12th, 2017, that'll be at 7:30 PM, that'll be our agenda meeting. The following will be September 26th, 2017, at 7:30 PM, that'll be our regular meeting. Approval of minutes, July 11th, 2017, agenda meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the above minutes.
Second, Grignardi.
Make a motion. Motion made by...
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Motion made by Ms. Grignardi, seconded by Mr. Carriffi, roll call.
Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignardi?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, move on, presentations and reports. Mayor?
I'll have up, uh... Yeah, before you... Thank you, Council President, we were deciding... You know, we're gonna have Stanbury come up first, so, Ed?
Well, I think that you, in order to do this, you need to open the public hearing on this ordinance so that this, Ed's presentation should be part of the public hearing on the record as part of the ordinance. So, you can certainly move that up on the agenda, but I would strongly advise that it be done as part of the public hearing on the ordinance so that the record is clear.
All right, so then we can, you wanna wait, or? I will, can you, you're not rushing, okay? So we'll do our presentation on what, Craftman Farms?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll do the ordinance, and then obviously if there's any questions, concerns, we'll have you here.
All right, sounds good. Thanks. Council President?
Yes.
If I just may make a comment about the Craftman Farms Foundation. And I've served on that committee for a number of years now, and I'm always impressed with the quality of the individuals, the dedication of all of them. Vonda, she does a fantastic job, her predecessor did a fantastic job, Barbara the same thing, all of the volunteers, the docents, the trustees. You know, in almost every committee I've served on since nineteen, since, for the past 52 years, 10% of the people on the committee do 90% of the work. This is the rare exception. This is the one where 100% of the people do 100% of the work. Proud to say too that I still have money left in my pocket when I walk by Davy Willen, so, that's good. And that being said, I'd like to, Craftman Farms, Vonda, to come up and give the presentation.
And thank you for all your efforts.
Vonda, why don't you introduce all of the members that are here?
Uh, yes, well, I'm trying to look around to see who all is here. I think we're all kinda congregated in this area. Board members, you can raise a hand, volunteers, prior board members, you know, there's a lot of people represented here. I'm the executive director, and I'm, I feel like I should, I don't even really need to do this report, so many nice things that were said about us, but I'll go ahead. I know there's a lot to cover, so I, and I have a lot to, we do this presentation every year, and there's a lot to take care of. When I came about a month ago and Stanbury did a presentation, and they did an animation, and I thought, wow, I could really up my game a little bit. So I normally start this presentation talking a little bit about the history of Craftman Farms, kind of how we got from where we are, we're then in the Stickley era to today. And so I'm gonna show a video instead of doing that as I normally would, so if you can turn over here, let me get the messages to go away. Welcome to the Stickley Museum at Craftman Farms. In beautiful Parsippany, New Jersey, the early 20th century home of Gustav Stickley, who was a business entrepreneur and a visionary, and built the property based on the principles of the American Arts and Crafts Movement. Today, we just call it his dream home. He moved into these cottages first in 1910, and then continued to develop the property as a farm and a school, a home for his family and a community. He lived here until 1917, and this year we're marking the 100th anniversary of his sale of the property. His imprint on the property is still very visible, probably the most visible in the log house here, which was his family home and which is today open to the public for tours 16 times per week, every week, all year long. And it's amazing that Stickley's imprint is still in the property, but most amazing that it's still here, that the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, back in 1989, committed to saving the property, that led by their governing body, it was saved and designated a national historic landmark. The Stickley Museum at Craftman Farms was established to preserve, interpret, and maintain the site's daily operations. And today, people visit to find a quiet place off of what's become a really busy road. Some people come for a tour to see beautiful furniture, sometimes to learn a little history. For many, it's a place that's on their bucket list. It's the kind of place that you really have to experience. It's hard to really capture in a video. There are a lot of places like this in the world. Okay, so, that covered a little bit of history, a little bit about how we got to where we are today, and I'm gonna stand back because I have to watch, I don't have notes, so I have to watch my slides. So, if somebody can turn the lights down a little bit, I don't know if that's possible, it might be a little easier to see.
Actually, those over here would be better.
I think that's good. Yeah. So, if I'm anybody's way, let me know, but I'll get started. So, I normally start with a little bit of history about Craftman Farms, the video took care of that, but one thing I didn't mention that's important to us here now is that 10 years ago, in 2007, we signed a 25-year operating agreement with the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. We had an operating agreement already, but the 25-year agreement was very important because it stabilized ownership of the property and allowed us to pursue preservation funds a little more aggressively outside of the township. That support from the township is really important. We also got some partial funding for, there are historic site master plan in that year. Another thing I didn't really touch on, but is important, is that the original property was 650 acres, quite a bit larger than it is today, with 12 buildings, and today the current property is 30 acres, but nine of the original buildings are still on the property, which is pretty remarkable. And this is a map of the property in the Stickley era, and if you're having a little hard time getting oriented to the property, this is Route 53 here, and the railroad ran through the property. It was the Erie Leckewana line then, but today it's New Jersey Transit, of course. And Route 10 ran along this side of the property. And later, the entrance had to be shifted after the railroad bed was raised, and now the entrance is here. So, if you've been to the property before, here's a close-up of the map, of the map showing where the buildings are, and the parking lot is where the former orchard was. We don't have an orchard today, but this is, is where the parking lot is. So just, if you haven't been before, haven't been in a while, just wanted to briefly talk about some of the, all the buildings on the property, just kinda go through them. So here's a close-up of this area of the property that I shaded here. The log house, which I mentioned before, but it's connected to the annex, which was an open-air pavilion in Stickley's time, later enclosed, and right now is our education building. There are twin cottages, the north and south cottage, which Stickley first lived in when they moved onto the property, and the white cottage makes the fourth residence on the property. There's another building in this area, which is now our administration building, and I talked about it a lot last year, but it was originally a garage and a workshop on the property. So this is what these buildings look like, the log house, the north cottage, the south cottage, the white cottage, and the annex, and the workshop garage, which is today the administration building. Other section of the property includes the farm buildings. And another thing that happened, I believe in 2007, was adding those to the property. So, about 10 years ago, they were acquired by the township, and they include the horse barn, the milk house, the dairy barn, and the calf barn, which is today an apartment that is where a caretaker lives. But these are what the buildings look like. A lot of people who've been to the site haven't ever been over to this part of the property. The dairy barn burned in the 70s, and you can see it's essentially the ruins of the building. So, what do we do? I covered this a little in the video. The Craftman Farms Foundation, now the, today the Stickley Museum at Craftman Farms, was established to preserve the site, to operate it, to maintain daily operations, and to interpret the site. And our mission, it's on our website, I won't read it aloud to you, but essentially, we are all about Craftman Farms and promoting the ideals of Gustav Stickley. And we, this is a little bit of our current strategic plan, which we're going to have to start working on because we're getting to the end of it. And one of the, a couple of major parts of that strategic plan were to expand our audience in our facilities, which is something that the township has really been helping us to do. Some FAQs about the property today and how it's run. As I mentioned, it's open year-round. Last year, we had 82 programs on the property. A program is anything from a customized tour to a fall family day to a customized trip in some way. We have, we serve an average of 11,000 people per year, and we have a core group of volunteers, about 53, who run the museum itself, and then if you expand out to our trustees, the total is more like 74 people. And this is an important part that I want to talk about a little bit with how we are funded today. A lot of times, people assume that we receive money from the township, but we do not. We receive capital funding from the township for preservation, and we request those funds in a presentation like this. And our operational budget must be raised by us, and currently, the operational budget is $500,000, so it's all self-funded. And just a little bit about how we do that. It's not easy to do. Some years are harder than others, last year particularly was a difficult year, so we are rebounding from that. We have, we pursue grants. We get a grant from the state of New Jersey, the Historical Commission, a general operating support grant that is enough to be in operation for a little more than four weeks out of the year. So for the rest of the year, the rest of the weeks, we have to come up with funding. We have memberships, we have fundraisers, our annual gala is coming up on October 7th. We raise about a fourth of our income in that weekend, it's an important weekend to us. And of course, we also earn income on the site. We have a museum shop, we have missions to the site and educational programs, all of which help to, to meet the operational budget every year. One thing you might not see there, that you might be surprised by, is we don't have, we've had a hard time breaking into corporate support in the area, that's certainly something we would love to know more about how to get into. So, we are surrounded by corporations, but haven't had a lot of success tapping into corporate support locally, and would love to be able to do that more. A little bit more about how we operate. So from the director's perspective, the three tasks set in front of us to preserve, operate, and interpret. Operations interpretations are kind of two sides of the same coin. You wanna open up to the public, and you have to have things for them to do, and interpretation essentially means programs. So these things go hand in hand, but they are what help us to earn income on the site, which helps us to maintain a staff, which helps us to maintain daily operations, and the staff also, essentially it's my job to make sure that the buildings are properly maintained, and that we have priority list of what needs to be done. So, these two things should work together, even though they don't necessarily have a lot of overlap on every day. If you're preserving buildings, you're hopefully making them secure for the public to use, and, you know, the goal is always to have, of course, beautifully preserved buildings, but you also want to have buildings that can be in use, so that they're lively, and, you know, beautiful buildings, a mausoleum is a beautiful building, but you wanna have a building that has a lot of life in it, so that's not where we're going with it. So we want beautiful buildings that are safe and operable, and that also helps us to earn income and run programs. So the more buildings that we have in use at Craftman Farms, the better off we are. So ultimately, the goal is to serve the community. We're owned by the Township of Parsippany, they're, the main purpose of being there, of saving the site, is to be a real community resource. And what that means to me and to the trustees on the board is to have an economic impact, to share our facilities with the community, to enhance the quality of life, and also to share local heritage and history, to be a part of sharing local history, and hopefully to be a source of pride and international exposure. I want to talk about a couple of those just for a minute. We started surveying visitors a little over a year ago, and asking our visitors how much they do other activities in the area when they come to take a tour at Craftman Farms. And of the 325 people who answered that question, more than half of them, 57% said that they will do an additional, at least one additional activity in the area. And usually, it's dining, they're gonna go to lunch probably. But about 20% of those people report doing more than one activity. So, we know that we do, it's maybe not as large of an impact as we'd like to have, but that's certainly something we could grow. You know, I'd love to see us have some partnerships with local restaurants, so we can send people, if they have an admissions ticket, that they get a discount on a drink or on dessert or something like that. But that's something that we can develop. As a facility in use, we are currently a polling station. When we begin work on the rehabilitation of the administration building later this year, we'll vastly improve the polling station right now if you vote there. It's a very tiny room to vote in, and will get a lot better after that. And we hope to be able to share this new building, there's a conference room space that'll be set aside, that we want to share with our Parsippany neighbors. So beyond all of that, the sort of intangibles about in helping with the quality of life and sharing history. You know, I was trying to think through recently, some things that I've been involved in, in my, in my position. There's been a national documentary that's in production, they've come twice, they are, they're in Arizona, but they've come twice to shoot at Craftman Farms. It's a documentary about Gustav Stickley. We were recently featured on NJTV's Drive By History. Our, last year's exhibition on Nookan Potter was featured in a national journal, and I don't want to go into this too far, but Pokemon Go was really busy and popular on our site last year. You don't, you don't ask to be into it, you can't take yourself off of it, but we decided, since people were stopping on our, on our site, to play the game and walking around the screens, they might as well. We posted information in the most obvious places for them to learn a little bit about Craftman Farms. It's still, I mean, there's still pre-teens walking around the property, playing Pokemon Go on the site. A little bit more, but just about the exposure around the country and the world. This is a little bit about our membership around the country, how it's scattered around the country. But I was emailing yesterday with a member in New Zealand, so we really do have an international membership. And visitors also come from all around the United States. We collected 394 ZIP codes last year, five of them were from different countries and 25 states. About 250 of those were from New Jersey, and 86 from Morris County. That's a pretty good, I think that's a pretty good spread of what we typically would get on a day-to-day basis. Now, this report is really a lot about preservation, because that's where the main part of our partnership with the township is, and we're very fortunate to have the support of the township in helping to preserve the buildings. So I've listed here our most recent use of open space monies, starting with 2013, a large grant for $520,000, which we have still been working on. It essentially gave us seed money for the five projects that are listed there. Some of them, we're still getting them going, and really coming back now and saying, okay, this project is ready to go, and we need additional funding, or we need a way to move forward with it. The 2015 resolution is for roof preservation and north cottage windows, that's all complete. And the 2016 grant, which is from last year, the request for help with the full rehabilitation of the administration building. That's gonna start shortly. As soon as I have a date for the groundbreaking, I will let everybody know, we're excited to get started. And it probably won't surprise you that we're coming back asking for additional money this year. And on top of the, on top of the big project that we have coming up, we still have additional needs in some of the other buildings that we just don't want to lose momentum on. I'll go into that in a little bit in a minute. And there's a resolution on the consent agenda about the 2013 grant, just asking that as our priority has changed on some of these projects, that we shift some of the money from one into another one, giving, shifting the money around a little bit. So as a way to talk about some of these, some of the open space funds and how they have been utilized, I thought I would just look at it...
Vonda, before you leave that last slide...
Sure.
The lighting portion?
Uh-huh.
That's the exterior lighting part that we need, since we are a polling place...
Yes.
And in November, it's dark at 5 o'clock, and people come to vote. It's, it's essential, the liability issue, that we have a better lit entrance away from the parking lot to the polling place.
And it's dark at 5:00 AM and 5:00 PM in November as well. So the poll workers will tell you it's dark when they get there. So, just a little bit about what's been done in the last few years and what we need to continue working towards. The log house, you'll see here, has had a lot of varied projects done, and the last, this has really been since I've been the director, since 2014. I wrapped up the fire suppression project, which was a major undertaking and probably the most important project we've done in the last 10 years. There were two fires on the property over its 100-year history, so protecting it from fire is really vital. And you'll see that we pursued funding first from the township, and then got an 80% match from Morris County. We've done exterior staining the logs, painting the trim, prepared a lot of roof leaks, replaced gutters, that sort of thing. Of course, when it's an old building, other needs pop up. These are by and large not of the bigger variety that we've, that we've done, and that there may, will be some down the line that we know we'll have to address. But for right now, we had a problem with a pipe a couple of years ago that flooded our shop, and in the process of cleaning it up, we realized we had asbestos in a closet area that's actively used, so we really need to remove the asbestos. We have an aging HVAC system, I think it's 16 years old. It should be replaced by 2020. Our engineer has advised us to put around $15,000 into repairs, and hold off on the full overhaul of the system because digitization is happening so rapidly that he expects will benefit a lot if we wait a couple of years, we can get a better system. We had a problem with the humidifier, connected the HVAC system problems, and that damaged the smoke head. When we went to get, repair the smoke head, that's part of our, our fire alarm system, we found out that our alarm system is more than 20 years old, and none of the parts are replaceable anymore. So the alarm company suggested, they said we could kind of get around it for now, we still have fire protection at the moment, but they really said we should replace the whole system, because in 20 years, these systems have advanced as well. So it's really timed for a new system. And we've had a roof leak that was periodically bad in the dining room that's gotten periodically worse now, so it's time to address that. The annex building, which is our education building, a lot of you've been there, has had just a little bit of work. We've, we installed this beautiful bluestone walkway that is, provides the main ADA access to the building, which is really vital and important. And we've had just a few leaks in the roof that we've repaired. We know that there's work to do, especially on the exterior of this building, and we'd like to finish, the upper floor is unfinished, we'd like to get that done, but it's not our current priority right now. The north cottage, we've been working on, as best I can tell, since about 2007, and I'm happy to say that the last major part of the current plans was to restore the windows. We did that with money from the township, matching grant from Morris County at 80%, and that project was completed last year, and it looks great, and we're really thrilled to have that done. The only thing that's really remaining is this building needs fire and security, fire and security system, it doesn't have that. It does affect our ability to get insurance on the contents, and it's something we need to do. Its twin cottage, the south cottage, has only just started. We started working on it after finishing the north cottage windows, we had enough money to be able to work on the south cottage windows. And what you're looking at are the 15 windows that we restored. I, we were strategic in our planning, because all of our visitors who come and take tours see this vantage point of the south cottage, and it looks terrific. The unrestored windows are on the backside of it. But we don't want to lose momentum on this, we would like to finish this project, and we'd like to be able to go back to Morris County again, we think they'd be agreeable in helping us complete the building. And then, we would have a little work to do to make it usable to the public, but it would be greatly enhanced security-wise by getting the windows done, which would allow us to add some climate control. And of course, we need a fire and security system there as well, too. The white cottage, I've talked a lot about in the last couple of years, we, it's a building that's probably had the most deterioration over its 100-plus year history, and it really needs work done on it. We had thought we would move our staff there, the feasibility study that we were able to do with 2013 funds really showed us that it wasn't the right building to move the staff to. But we are committed to stabilizing this building. We pursued a grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust. We awarded that grant, it's a 60% of the, of the project, and we hope to be able to do these two major construction projects I've been talking about on the property at the same time. So, our priority is, this is not enough funding to do all of the stabilization we need. We could still mothball the building, my preference would be to put it into use, but we need to stabilize it, whatever we do. And so we'd like to continue with that, and I also think the trust would be agreeable to providing another matching grant. And Mike referred to the exterior lighting, that has been a project that has been kind of on the backburner. We keep working on buildings, they, they have needs that pop up here and there, but we really must get lighting done on the property. I'm happy to say that we have done an extensive study of the original lighting. We now have a design plan completed, you're looking at it here. We have three estimates on the project. We do need to do an archaeological survey to be able to get through the State Historic Preservation Office planning, and it's really something, it's surprising that we haven't done it yet. So we really need to do the archaeological study. Once we do it, we only have to do it one time, and then we'll be able to install the lighting, and it's a really beautiful plan, I'm excited about getting that done, and it will vastly improve our ability to do evening programs, and it's just much safer, which is really important. And last but lot least, the administration building, which I talked mostly about last year. I came to the council and, and asked for funding to rehabilitate this building. It's the first building people see on the property. The bottom part of the building is original. It is, it has a great potential to suit a lot of the needs that we currently have on the property. So I went over those a lot, I won't go into too much detail, but we needed to expand our facilities for staff, expand our facilities for exhibitions and programs. We've outgrown our program space, a lot of our programs throughout the year are maxed out, and we can't add more Girl Scouts to a program because there's simply no space to do it. So, we will be able to double and sometimes triple our program space by moving it into the garage, the original garage space. So we will also be able, so this is that space, you can see it will be partitioned off as a conference room in one space, this is the part of the property that we want to be able to share. We know there's a need on our side of Parsippany for people to have a place for meetings, so we intend to leave that as a conference room space. It can all be opened up. If it's all opened up, there's room for 120 people standing, which our current room, our education room, holds about 45 people. So, we can do some of our own events on the property, not just programs, we could do sit-down lectures, but we could also do fundraising events, too. This is a big improvement, and it'll vastly improve the voting space as well. The first level of that building will be for staff, and we're replacing the second level, which burned in 1950 and was never replaced, but by bringing it back, we expand our staff space, and the, the space that's kind of in gold there is, a space that's been set aside for storage, which we also really need. All of our collection storage is currently in the log house. It puts a lot of wear and tear on the building, and it's really a good idea to move it, and this building can be built to, for the weight. So, as we move ahead with this project, what's gonna get started in November, it's really moving us forward between this and the white cottage and the exterior lighting, in a couple of years, you're gonna see a transformed property, and it's a pretty exciting time to be involved. And I hope, to encourage you to think of it as a long-term investment, with all the possibilities that I've noted before. And with that in mind, of course, I'm coming back and asking for, first, the, there's, there's money remaining in our 2013 grant, and we're asking to shift, we had expected the white cottage to be a bigger project, and the admin building to be a smaller one, but it's, it's been the reverse. So we're asking to shift some more funds to the administration building from that, doesn't change the money at all, just moving funds around a little bit. And we're requesting more funds towards some of the projects that I mentioned, as I've been, been going through each building. The log house HVAC system, the roof leak... The log house HVAC system, the roof leak, the security system, same thing, the security system in the north cottage, continuing the windows restoration in the south cottage, the stabilization project in the white cottage, and then importantly, across the property, installing the exterior lighting, but doing the archaeological study first. So just to close, I think that it's really easy to get bogged down in all the costs of preservation. It is, it is an expensive thing to do, and the hard thing about it is, it's never any cheaper after today. It does, it continues to get more expensive. So the best time to try to do it is, is when you know about it, to keep the momentum going. So just to kind of end on a more positive note, I want you to think about all the buildings I've been talking about, this log house, the north cottage, the south cottage, the white cottage, the annex, the administration building. These are half of the buildings on the site. And if you can imagine all of these buildings in use in same way, so this is what a day could look like, not in the far-off distant future, you know, we're talking about in a few years. So you could imagine a group of adults who come for a walking tour, maybe on a late spring morning, and then around the same time, we've got a busload of 4th graders who arrive for tours to learn about local history. Or maybe that bus has a group of high school kids from a woodworking class. They find us already without us really trying. It's a great way to demonstrate woodworking to students. Maybe there, at noon, we open to the public, and maybe there's a storytime in the north cottage for young children. That cottage next door in the south cottage would be a great place to have an artisan demonstrating their work, having visitors be able to stop over, see what they do, maybe give it a try. After school is out that day, we could have a Girl Scout workshop in our new education space. We have, all this time, we could have a scholar who is spending a couple of weeks studying our ceramics collection and living in the white cottage to be able to do that. In the evening, we could have a twilight tour, which is really popular already. Or maybe we have a wine tasting in our new building, or we rent out the space for somebody else to do a wine tasting. So it can vastly, uh, change this property and make us into an even more dynamic place than we're already trying to be. And with that in mind, if you have not visited and taken advantage of the $1 admission through the end of the summer, there's not a lot of Thursdays left in the summer to take advantage of this, so I encourage you to do that, and then make sure to come out for Fall Family Day. It's our biggest family event of the year. We'll have 500 to 700 people on the property that day, and it's a lot of fun. It's coming up pretty soon on Saturday, September 16th. And that is it for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation.
Nice day. Any questions?
Council members?
Anybody up here? Questions, concerns?
Great job, Vonda. Thank you very, very much, Vonda.
Very thorough. Appreciate all your efforts and keep up the good work.
Thank you. I tried to stay on time.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to council members. Anything to report? Nothing to report? Township attorney?
No report. I have a little bit of commentary on a couple of the ordinances that are on the agenda, and I'll hold my comments until then.
Okay, great. Our business administrator, I know you're never lost for words.
I'm not. I think tonight's going to be Ann's night. I've worked in concert with Ann on a lot of topics, but I'm going to let her run with it as long as her voice lasts. But just quickly, we did receive on, on the gov deals that we do, we sold all the, the materials that were there. So again, it cleans up the sewer area, sewer plant area, and we made $5,400, so that was a very positive, uh, thing. With regard to Crafton Farms, we work very closely with, you know, with administration, and I, I have to say that it's been a great experience, and, and they, what they do is, you know, they, they embrace the rules and rigor, and I know that Vonda can pass a purchasing test now quite well. She has been under the tutorial of Mike Hardy, and I just wanted to give, give some kudos to them working very well together, so, you know, and, and good job. And again, just for clarity, the $1,005,000 that we did last year, this $250,000 just augments many of the projects that, just a little bit more, because it's not an exact size-
Yes.
But as you can see, they got into the weeds of all the nuances of such a, a beautiful setting and a beautiful, beautiful buildings and great history here. So good, good job, and good job to all of you, but that's, that's all I have. But again, good job, Vonda. Mike said, make sure I told you that. I don't want to say an A, A+, because you have nothing then to go for, but I'll give you a high, a good A, a good A, okay? Because, you know, there's always room for improvement.
Thank you. Ellen, your three minutes are up.
Okay, goodbye.
All right. We're going to move on to our chief financial officer.
Yeah, I'm not going to be very long because I have no voice. I guess you're happy about that. Couple of things. You have the budget status report-
Yes.
Um, that just gives you where we are by line item through 6:30 of 17. Any questions, please contact me. And of course, it's from the new system, so it's quite detailed. Also, we have, we're going out to bid on the bonds. We're going out for $62,826,000, but it's only, 48 million of that has already been approved by you by notes. So it's just like refunding, and only, it's a small amount, it's really new. It's about 14 million. And that's for all of the utilities and the-
All the projects.
Everything. So we're going out. We felt it was the right time because the, the debt is dropping off, and we calculate to keep debt steady, and this is the time, plus the interest rates are starting to rise, this is the right time. I do, we had a rating agency presentation, I have a copy for each one of you. It's really well done, and we have a lot to be proud of here in Parsippany. We just got word that we have a very, very high AA rating. We should be very proud of that. So I just got now, at 6:00 today, from Standard and Poor's, and we do have the same from Moody's, so congratulations to everyone on that. And so you'll have a resolution in there today, it's the non-consent to, to authorize the sale of the bonds. The sale of the bonds is by auction, and it will take place on September 7th.
Great. Thank you, Ann. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm also, I have a lot of resolutions on there for Chapter 159s. That's simply adding grants to the budget. It's, it's basically a plus and a minus. And there's some things like drive sober, get pulled over, things like that. And there is one, I believe, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I can't, I don't know which one. There is one that has some funding, but we have plenty of money for that.
Okay.
Again, what, what part of it is, is that we're also receiving money, so these are excellent things. Take a real look at, like, for example, with regard to Smith Baldwin House, we did receive the over $222,000, but in order to establish how it gets, flows into the town, we do a Chapter 159.
What's it doing?
So just take a look at, these are all the things that, you know, Rob always talks about getting the grants, and, and we do pursue them, and, you know, we're very pleased that, they just have, fortunately, there's a plethora of them on tonight, which are all positive, so-
That's good news.
It is good news. And one other thing, with Ann, I, I read her, the email that we did get from our financial people. It was not only a strong AA, but there's a lot of pressure to go to that next step that we, we are committed to do.
Striving.
This town will be a AAA.
Hey, great. We're going to hold you up to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hold me to that.
I will.
I'm going to work with Vonda, and we're going to, we're going to get that A+ Vonda.
The other thing, one other thing is that Vonda, of course, reached out to me. There is plenty of money available for them, and strongly recommend doing that from my side, from any of your side. A great job.
Again, one of the things that she's referring to is, as you know, the open space monies are broken down into percentages, and we wanted to verify that you fit into the additional 250, didn't go over the excess of what other requirements were for open space, cultural, historical. So that's, that was what we were trying to, it wasn't about how much money, but that your percentage, you fit into that, so we could give the council comfort level and the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you.
Ann, just a question for you. Were you able to get our debt schedule for us that I requested?
I have it right here.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Great.
The other thing, now, it's just one copy for, for Rob, if anybody wants. Also-
Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, yeah. You also have the annual debt statement and supplemental debt statement on the website, if anybody wants to look at that, and you're more than welcome to. That's very detailed on the debt schedule, but you'll see in your presentation where it shows the debt dropping and how we're adding the new debt.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ellen.
To give to them.
Okay.
It's not just about Rob. Don't tell him I said that. Okay. Kidding.
I submitted them already.
Oh, you did? Okay, I wasn't sure that they got them.
Okay.
Are we good over there?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, thank you. All right, all those numbers. All right, we'll move on to our township clerk.
No report at this time, council president. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council members, any committee reports?
I have one.
Okay, Mr. DePiero.
The Municipal Alliance Committee, which I serve as liaison to, is having a special program on September 7th, 6:30 PM, and it's not going to be at the PAL. Most of the time, our meetings and our functions are at the PAL building. This is going to be at High Focus, 1259 through 46 East-
Okay.
Building 4B. So that's September 7th at 6:30 PM.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. DePiero.
Excuse me, can I add to that? High Focus, and what Councilman DePiero was talking about, is the work that we're doing with the MAC. This, this group gives, I guess, counseling to family and parents of addicts. It's not only the addict that needs help, but it's the family, and it's a wonderful program they're putting together. I recommend everyone go to that, just to know how difficult it is for the family, not only that they lose family members, but just to be supportive, so that's what High Focus is about.
Thank you.
Just want to give a report from the Morris County League of Municipalities. As a reminder, the event's coming up on September 20th with Anthony Iaccone, President of Morris County College, going to be there about CCM, and also discussing Morris County economics. So if anybody would like to attend.
Good information. Okay. Anybody else with a report? Okay, we'll move on to bids to be taken. August 7th, 2017, Greens Drainage Project, no golf club, rebid, no bids received. August 3rd, 2017, installation, new Monroe Custom Utility Service Body on Township Ford, F-550 truck, to be taken. August 30th, 2017, seal proposals for rehabilitation service for Wells 14 and 21. August 29th, 2017, sale proposals for supply installation of a new RKI Custom A-line Equipment Service Body for water department truck. Quotations, proposals, or qualifications, none. We're going to move on to the public hearing. I'd like to entitate a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public.
Great. Does anybody from the public, if you'd like to come forward, please sign and state your name? You have three minutes.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. Just a note here, you have a resolution, 2017, 124, drunk driving enforcement fund, and we heard Ann say we have money for, what is it, the, the crackdown that's going on now on drunk driving, and the drive sober or get pulled over. Well, this nation is suffering from a lack of extended corporate responsibility, and this is one example. Here, go around on the roads here, in Parsippany or anywhere, and this is what you're going to find. Yeah, aluminum, glass, plastic. People are conveniently going to stores and buying this stuff. It encourages drinking and driving. We should have an ordinance to prevent these products, not only in Parsippany, but the whole state of New Jersey. If I write a letter, I don't have any cloud, if you guys do, but you want to, come with me or, or have it on a cleanup day, go along the roads, and this is what you see. These are the new pristine ones, but they're, they're layers deep sometimes. I'm already thousands of them. But this is the corporation thinking about one thing only, profit, and a little convenient liquor. I could pull into a liquor store, I get my, my little booze, and then when I'm done, they shouldn't be allowed. It's a bad product, and it's a danger to public safety and health, and it encourages, promotes alcoholism, and it also lead, leads to, you know, pollution, litter, and it's, it's just a, it encourages drinking and driving. So all these programs, we're wasting our money if we don't tackle things like this. It's just cosmetic. This shouldn't be allowed.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you very much. Thank you for your efforts. Anybody else from the public that'd like to come forward?
I live at 102 Brooklawn Drive. Now that I've had time to think about Ed Sneakers' July 25th Town Council presentation and the August 12th Daily Record News article about the so-called District at 1515 Project on Route 10, I feel that I have a good background to comment on the proposed development tonight. I want to be upfront about where I stand on this issue. I think that our governing bodies should not approve the, the construction of large-scale apartment complexes anywhere in Parsippany, including 1515 Route 10. However, if projects like this must be approved because of court-mandated affordable housing quotas, our governing bodies should have a responsibility to negotiate the best possible contractual terms on behalf of our residents. The proposal for the development of 1515 Route 10 falls short in two areas. First is the 15% affordable housing set-aside rate for the project. New Jersey law allows a set-aside of between 15% and 20%. At a rate of 20%, Parsippany would have to build a total of 12,000 housing units to reach its affordable quota. At the 15% rate proposed for the project at 1515 Route 10, our obligation would be 16,000 total housing units. That's an extra 4,000 units that the township does not need and is not required to accept. Also, if you allow 15% set-aside for this project, then future new housing projects and office conversions will demand the same treatment. None of these mega apartment deals should be approved unless the affordable housing component is a minimum of 20%. If a developer feels that a lower set-aside rate is warranted, let him present his case in court. The second major flaw in the 1515 Route 10 proposal is its payment in lieu of taxes component. Parsippany loses money on every apartment that's constructed, affordable or not. I make this statement with complete confidence based on the statistics that I presented to the council a few months ago that have never been challenged. The 7,000 apartments that currently exist in Parsippany generate $11 million in property taxes. However, on the expense side, it costs $26 million just to educate the 1,260 students that live in these apartments. The net result is a $15 million deficit that must be absorbed by other residents and businesses. Given these statistics, it's only reasonable to believe that the construction of new apartments will generate the same type of deficits. So if Parsippany is doomed to lose money on this project anyway, why increase our losses by offering the developer an additional discount in the form of payment in lieu of taxes? In summary, if the developer does not agree to a minimum 20% of affordable housing set-aside and full payments of annual property taxes, the application for District at 1515, as well as any other future apartment projects, must be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Valori, you want to just respond to?
Yeah, I know, there's some question concerns there. Yes, respond.
Mr. Venetia, I just wanna respond to a couple of things that you said that are just simply not accurate. First of all...
He's talking.
First of all, what is, before the council tonight is the adoption of an ordinance for a redevelopment plan. That's all that's before the council tonight. There is no pilot. There is no payment in lieu of tax proposal that is before the governing body tonight, and by adopting the redevelopment plan, the council is not adopting a pilot. The applicant certainly has the right to ask the governing body for a financial agreement, which would result in a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. And for the folks out there, that just means it's a tool under the redevelopment law that permits project owners to pay either a percentage of construction costs or a percentage of revenue to the town, with a minimum of 10%, can be higher, of revenue generated to the project, by the project to the town in lieu of paying property taxes. Typically, that number will yield a higher number to the governing body than would be realized under traditional ad valorem taxes. And typically, that 5% would go to the county under statute, and 0 would go to the school district by statute. Now, municipalities can agree to share, revenue share with schools if they so desire. But, they, in order to, for the council to consider and vote on a pilot or a financial agreement, which is done by ordinance, there's a lot of work that would have to be done. First of all, the applicant would have to fill out a very detailed application, which would include not the kind of general information that you've provided, and so I would not, don't take the fact that nobody has disputed your facts and figures as it relates to this project, and therefore, that should infer some sort of concurrence with them. To the contrary, they, there's been no reaction to them, because they really can't be considered. The applicant would be duty-bound to provide specific financial analysis to the governing body with regard to the financial viability of the project without a pilot. The township has engaged its own financial consultant, Michael Hanley of NW Financial, who was here at the last meeting and who ably represented the township in connection with the UPS pilot, and your financial consultant would advise the council on whether or not the project warranted a pilot. But you have to satisfy a but-for test. You can't just willy-nilly give out pilots to developers. You have to be able to show that the project is not financially feasible without the pilot. And you get into a very detailed analysis of what that means. Feasibility is typically measured in terms of financeability of the project, and that means that banks have to get a certain rate of return on their loan. And the other factor is internal rate of return, which is cash-on-cash return for individual investments who would be, investors who would provide the equity component into a project. And so that analysis has to be done before the financial consultant can say to the council, yes, this project would qualify for a pilot, and then the governing body would have the discretion as to whether or not to award it or not. As an additional check on that, financial agreements must be forwarded to the state, to the DCA, where they are also reviewed for feasibility and appropriateness. And so I don't want you to think that, or anyone to think, that payment in lieu of tax arrangements are just sort of made, you know, willy-nilly and without any thought or without any merit. But again, that's not a subject for tonight. This is only the redevelopment plan. With regard to affordable housing, the percentage of affordable housing units in a particular project does not in any way affect what a municipality's aggregate affordable housing obligation will be. So whether it's 10, or 15, or 20% in a particular project, that does not impact what Parsippany's total affordable housing obligation will be. That is a subject that is still, you know, an unknown. It is still a function of the court process that we entered into back in 2015, and will be sorted out in the fullness of time. What I can tell you is, is that the COA regulations, and there are certain COA regulations that are still in effect and that are still utilized by the courts and by Fair Share Housing Center in terms of settling affordable housing cases, and in terms of courts imposing obligations on municipality. The one set of regulations that COA has failed to enact constitutionally is sort of what's your number. But there are a series of regulations that are still in effect and that are being enforced by the courts. And I could tell you, having negotiated and being part of the negotiation of multiple, probably 10 or more of these cases, Fair Share Housing Center insists upon, and I think Mr. Sneikus, in his experience, will certainly concur, that, you know, 15% for rental projects is set aside, 20% for fee simple projects, townhomes, condos, is the set-aside for affordable housing. I mean, those are the numbers that we're dealing with. That's not unique to Parsippany. That's, those are statewide numbers. You would concur with that, Mr. Sneikus?
Yes.
Yeah, and I've seen that in every negotiation that I've been involved with, involving several municipalities in Morris County, Essex County, Somerset County, and in dealing with Kevin Walsh, who was the executive director of Fair Share Housing Center, who was the point person on all this, all these cases for Fair Share Housing Center. So, the 15 to 20% is certainly, you know, is certainly what the set-aside should be, and that's what a court would impose. You know, Parsippany has an obligation. The obligation is going to be significant, whatever it is, based upon all the numbers that we have seen. Certainly been through that in detail in public presentations, I'm not gonna regurgitate that now. This project has been, you know, the subject of considerable planning and effort by the governing body, who has provided consistent policy advice, and by township professionals, and by the developer, who have worked very hard over a long period of time to develop a plan that is in an area of town that will not affect, you know, other residences, because there are none in immediate proximity to the project. Parsippany is a large town, largest population-wise in the county. It's a densely populated town, so I don't think you can put any project anywhere and say there won't be some impact somewhere in the municipality, but, you know, there is, and the governing body really, they make the policy call as to, you know, some impacts are more directed, more severe on others in terms of where they're located relative to population basis. And that was, and is, part of the analysis that has gone into the planning on this particular project. But, you know, to just say that, well, you're opposed to large-scale multifamily housing developments may sound good, and it may get a round of applause, but it's completely illegal. And the reality is that if you don't take the initiative to plan for where that housing will be located, and to plan for it in the best possible way in terms of minimizing impacts on the community, well, then the court will decide for you, based upon developers who come forward and demand that their projects, irrespective of where they're located, be approved, and Parsippany will lose complete control over the ability to plan for its future. And the whole reason why Parsippany and over 300 other municipalities in the state of New Jersey filed the declaratory judgment actions back in July of 2015 was to get temporary immunity orders from the courts with regard to builders remedy lawsuits, so that municipalities could take the time to plan, first of all, understand what their obligation is, which is still an open question, but to also plan for where these projects will be located. And, you know, to do this against a headwind of folks, and I'm not trying to be critical to you, but you have to understand, to do that, multifamily housing is just not popular, and it's in suburban New Jersey because of all of the impacts. But for folks to stand up there and to make statements as if the council has any say over whether or not there will be these projects, it's just doing a disservice to the public, because it's just not...